Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Novak.
All right, thank you. Why don't we start by adopting this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first thing on our agenda, and I forgot to set my iPad up, oh boy, is our DECA proclamation. And, all right, here we go. Sorry about that. All it says is members of DECA will appear before council to provide an update. Who's going to provide an update?
We'll bring the whole group up.
Well, all right, we'll bring the whole group up. All right, well, so you could, or you could start there and tell us a little bit, and then I'll meet you out front and I'll read the proclamation.
Perfect.
Okay, tell us what's going on.
I'd like to bring two more people up. Sorry, I'd like to bring two more people up.
Oh, go for it. I mean, technically, bring as many as you want up.
Okay, so basically, we're here to accept like a proclamation to make the second week in November National DECA Week for Coon Rapids. And we were gonna kind of open it up to any questions you guys have for us unless you just wanted to hear a little bit about what DECA is and what we're doing this month.
Okay. Well, then, why don't we go ahead and bring the group up, and I'll meet you in front of the dais. I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll bring the karaoke mic along, just in case anybody wants to sing, and we'll do questions then.
Perfect.
All right. Normally, Councilmember Carlson's doing donkashane with this, the old Wayne Newton, but you probably don't know that.
You don't want me to say, Ms. Mayor?
All right. Proclamation for DECA Week. Whereas, DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders. And whereas, the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And whereas, DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission. And whereas, DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business, and promotes competition. And whereas, DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders. And whereas, DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, officially proclaim November 10th through 14th, 2025, as DECA Week in the City of Coon Rapids proclaimed this fourth day of November, 2025. Now, why don't you introduce yourself, and then we'll check for questions.
Hi, my name is Liliana Gonya, and I'm the president of Coon Rapids DECA this year.
I'm Julia Smith. I am vice president of Leadership Development. And I am Elise Yang, and I am the vice president of Chapter Projects.
Awesome. Well, so, are you going to any trips, any competitions, anything you want to tell us about?
So, we are going to our district competition in January. However, we have already gone to our fall leadership conference, which was at the Hyatt Regency in downtown Minneapolis, where we competed in a role play and an exam.
Yeah, we have a lot of competition coming up this, later in the year. We were just kind of kicking it off with FLC. Then we have districts coming up in January. And then, this year, FLC, no, this year, internationals is in Atlanta, Georgia. So, we're all gonna travel down there, and it should be a lot of fun.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And Mr. Bean didn't come tonight?
No, he's watching from Icanti. Hello. So, yeah, we're just here 'cause, so, November is National DECA Month for DECA. And so, we have like four chapter campaigns that we're doing to get spots for internationals and send like new members to ICDC for either academies or other opportunities. So, by doing things like being here today for a community service project, we are like coming out to the mayor's, we do light up signs across the community, we have like a food drive for Christmas.
You're making our sound guy go crazy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just hold the mic, yeah.
We have like a food drive going on, we're doing highlights on local businesses, and we're even making a promotional campaign for a local flower company in Coon Rapids, Forever Floral. And so, we'll be doing like a fundraiser with some discount cards for them.
And you have something new this year now, I believe. It's a business sponsorship? Is that right?
I'm, are you talking about the innovations?
I don't know, it was like $20?
Oh, okay, we're doing professional memberships. So, it's $20 to be put into being a professional member, and you can be contacted right away to be a judge, you can, it's basically like upfront supporting our chapter as well as going into our membership campaigns. We have to get 20 professional members, I'm sorry, and 20 alumni, to also get one of those little campaign spots.
Okay, so it's good for the person or the entity, and it's good for you if you get the professional memberships?
Yes. So, it helps us directly because you can also be a part of DECA, you could be a judge, and then you could also support us new members going to ICDC this year.
Excellent, excellent. All right. Is there anything else you want to share with us? Mr. Erickson, I hope we've done a pan of the room because it's a really impressive group they brought with tonight.
Tried to get in some more, but it was a little early.
Mr. Mayor.
But thank you so much.
Councilmember Armstrong?
I just, I just wanted to say kudos to you all. I had a friend back in the mid to late 70s that told me I should join DECA, and I was like, what's DECA? And he told me what it was and why it would be a good deal. I joined DECA, and it was a phenomenal experience, great for getting out and doing public speaking, getting to interface, well, face-to-face with individuals and in careers and in your lifestyle. It is, it was a huge, huge help to me, and I give you guys a big thumbs up for being in there.
Thank you so much. You guys always have so much nice things to say about us, and we really appreciate letting us come.
Plus, they know now the 70s had more than just teaching fire and wheel, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, thank you very much for coming in. Here is your proclamation. And did you want any pictures up front with your group before you go?
Sure.
We have a light agenda. Come on up, come on up. Everybody come up here. Come stand in front of the dais. Ms. Lenzmeyer, or, oh, here we go, Mr. Stemwell has his phone.
Getting mine out of my pocket.
All right. All right, I'm gonna be on the end for this, though. Okay. All right, and one more? All right, we're good. All right. Very good. Thank you all for coming in. You are gonna hang out a little while. Nice. We'll try and make the meeting quick then. But feel free to leave whenever you want. All right, next is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we have five items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first is to adopt Resolution 25-12, approving a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Lions at Pizza Flame, 2016 105th Avenue Northwest. We've received a, the city has received a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Coon Rapids Lions for Pizza Flame. This location currently does not have a gambling premises permit. The Coon Rapids Lions currently operate at one other location, Kendall's Tavern. So, with this additional premises, the gambling organization will still remain in compliance with the city code, which limits the number of premises permits for one organization to no more than five. State charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved or denied by the city council. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-121, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Lions at Pizza Flame, 2016 105th Avenue Northwest. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve a waiver of Christmas tree sales license fees for Boy Scout Troop 212. James Davis, on behalf of Boy Scout Troop 212, has requested city council consider a waiver of the $105 license fee and the $35 background investigation fee for operating a Christmas tree lot. They've submitted an application to operate a tree lot at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The troop has requested this in years past, and the council has always granted the waiver. The Boy Scouts are a nonprofit organization, and so we're looking to approve the waiver of $105 license fee and $35 background investigation fee for Boy Scout Troop 212 to operate a Christmas tree lot at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Next on our consent agenda is to approve a recycling center staffing agreement with Atlas Staffing. Coon Rapids, the Coon Rapids Recycling Center contracts staffing for its daily needs at the facility, and an annual contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated was approved by the city council on November 6th, 2024. Atlas has proven to be a great fit at the recycling center, and staff would like to renew the contract from November 1st, 2025 through November 1st, 2026. The hourly rate for the contracted staff increased by 2.5%. All other items are the same as the current contract. So, we're looking to approve the 2025-26 Atlas Staffing contract. Next item on our consent agenda is to accept the third quarter financial report. This is the financial information as of September 30th, 2025. It has been prepared and is being presented. The financial summary of all funds for the third quarter is attached for a review. And assuming that we have no specific questions, no action is necessary other than to acknowledge receipt of this report. And the fifth and final item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. Staff has prepared the attached list of electronic payments processed since the last council meeting. So, we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from October 16th, 2025 through October 29th, 2025. And that is our consent agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. Is there discussion, questions? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Armstrong?
Just, just a quick comment. Ms. Hanson, thanks for making those financial reports readable. I have my fair share of them that I just shake my head at, and you and your team do a phenomenal job of laying these things out so you can understand what's going on. I appreciate it.
You're here. All right, any other comments? I just wanted to mention before we vote, Tyler is here from Pizza Flame. That whole thing up front with the pictures like we did with DECA, we don't do that with you. But thanks for coming, though. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. Next, we're looking at doing a public hearing for a vacation of drainage and utility easements and consider a resolution 25-123. Paul and Margaret Anderson are property owners at 1945 130th Lane Northwest. Several years ago, they bought and combined an adjacent lot along 131st Avenue. The side yard, drainage, and utility easements were never vacated as part of that combination, and the property owners now want to build a garage but are unable to because the foundation would overlap the unvacated easements. On October 7th, the council adopted Resolution 25-113 to consider vacating the drainage and utility easements. All utilities have been notified, and there are no objections. The process for vacating an easement under the city's charter requires a public hearing and passage of a resolution. So, that's what we're looking to do now. Does anybody have any questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing in the case of the utility vacation for 1945 130th Lane. Is there anybody here to address council for the public hearing on that? Anybody who's here for public hearing on the vacation of easements? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I move that we adopt Resolution 25-123 to vacate drainage and utility easements for 1945 130th Lane Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider adoption of ordinance 2338, authorizing the sale of real estate, 2831 113th Avenue, and Resolution 25-122, amending the budget for the Public Safety Capital Fund. Mr. Brown, do you want to hit any highlights, or did we kind of nail this last meeting?
Yes, we did discuss this last time. Just a quick recap, this item involves the sale of the old Fire Station 3 to a buyer who would agree to develop an approximately eight-lot, single-family subdivision. Sale price is $303,000. We feel that reflects fair market value, although the purchase agreement would establish that the city would handle the demolition of the existing structure and working with the buyer. We felt that that just made sense. The city could do that work a little more cheaply. So, that buyer would go through the land use approval process over the course of the winter. We close by about April 30th of next year. Again, the buyer is Amana Homes, which is a local small developer, home builder in the region. So, you have a few items before you. First, we'll ask that you adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of the property, 2831 113th Avenue. Any sale of real estate by the city has to be done by ordinance. We introduced that a couple weeks ago. So, you'll be asked to adopt that ordinance. And then, after that, we'll ask you for three other action items. One is approval of a purchase agreement. And per some conversation earlier today, we have a couple minor tweaks to that purchase agreement. So, we'll ask that you incorporate those into your, into the motion language. One of those, and we can supply the language if needed, but one relates to paragraph 9.9. Just clarifying that, that the condition of the property will obviously change if the city is handling the definition. So, we wanted to just add a clause that says, except as otherwise provided by this agreement. And then, we propose adding a paragraph 24 that would establish that the city would be removing at least one evergreen tree prior to closing, that is, to accommodate the tree lighting coming up here in another month or so. So, a couple minor changes to that purchase agreement. And then, the other items, one is adopting a resolution that amends the budget for the Public Safety Capital Fund that will allow for use of those funds for demolition. Of course, that will just be reimbursed after closing. And then, finally, you're asked to approve an agreement for contract services with Solder &amp; Sons Excavating for demolition of the building. Can answer any questions?
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Brown, do you have that language that you want added in specifically? I scribbled as fast as I could.
Yes, I will do that. So, we would ask you to move approval of the purchase agreement with two amendments. One, in paragraph 9.9, in the last sentence, add except as otherwise provided by this agreement. And then, the second change, adding a paragraph 24 permitting the city to remove one evergreen tree prior to closing.
Yeah, the paragraph 9.9, it states in there clearly, "While this agreement is in effect, the seller is in effect, the seller shall operate and maintain the property in the same manner as it has been operated and maintained heretofore, free from waste and neglect, reasonable wear and tear accepted." Well, we're gonna be carrying it down. So, it seemed like stating the exception made sense.
Everything else stays the same. There just won't be a building there anymore.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Just one question on the budget amendment that will be required to pass this. A budget amendment in the amount of $140,000. I see that we have an agreement for contract and services from Solder &amp; Sons Excavating for $120,000 for the demolition. Why the difference of close to 20%?
That's, that's right. We did include that, one, just for a contingency in the event, something unusual comes up. But also, there are a couple of smaller contracts in the $2,000 to $3,000 range that relate to removing asbestos-containing materials, other regulated materials. So, there are a few other costs. Most of that is a contingency,
though. All right. And a follow-up to that, I'm noticing in the agreement with, with the company that's gonna do the demolition, it does not include removal of hazardous material. What do we anticipate for hazardous material in there? I thought, I thought there was some in there.
Yeah, there, there's very little. Again, it was about a $2,000 to $3,000 contract. That includes things like fluorescent light bulbs, any appliances that are there.
Small stuff.
Items like that simply can't just go directly into a landfill with, with all the other debris.
Makes sense. Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. And Mr. Brody, when we get to the motion, we can do two, three, and four together then?
Yeah, although I think that motion for the purchase agreement is getting kind of long, but I think you could still incorporate that into three and four if the motioners so inclined.
All you can do is separate.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting adding them to one. I was, I was.
One to be separate, and then what you do with two, three, and four. You could combine them or take them individually if it's easier.
Okay. Somebody wanna take a run at that?
I was gonna take a run at number one, just.
All right.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2338, authorizing the sale of real property at 2831 113th Avenue Northwest.
Second. With the added language to the.
No, this is just the ordinance.
Oh, that's just, never mind. Thank you. We have a motion, and, I'm sorry, motion by Butler, a second by Geisler. Is there any discussion on that? Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Just a clarification. My questions on the services and everything kind of did pertain to this, because if I didn't have answers to that, I probably wouldn't vote on authorizing the sale. So, they were kind of relevant.
Okay, good.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion passes. And now.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Grisgoviac, or Geisler.
I will make a motion that, one, we approve the purchase agreement with Abiza LLC for the property at 2831 113th Avenue Northwest, with the listed purchase agreement in our packet with the additions of, in paragraph 9.9 at the end, except as otherwise provided within this agreement. And the addition of paragraph 24, the city will be removing one tree from the lot prior to sale.
Mr. Brody's nodding his head. Okay, I think you did good, then.
Second part, adopt Resolution 25-122, amending the budget for the Public Safety Capital Fund. Third item, approve the agreement for contract services with Solder &amp; Sons Excavating Inc. for demolition services.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. And for clarification, the number three referred to was actually item four, but it was the third item on that motion.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Will the Public Safety Capital Fund be reimbursed prior to the end of this year? Or will that be a 2026 amend deal?
Mr., I would say 2026. We're not closing till April, right?
Correct. Councilmember Grisgoviac, the reimbursement will take place when the property sells in 2026.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we're on to item, somebody notes, there we go. 10, right?
Yep.
Consider adoption of ordinance 2337, amending Section 5-2003 Sub 5, lawful gambling trade area definition. This was introduced at the last meeting. The ordinance was introduced at the October 21st city council meeting, and this ordinance would amend the city code Section 5-2003 Sub 5, amending the definition of trade area to include the city of Dayton. Doing so will allow lawful gambling premises permit holders to donate to charitable organizations within the city of Dayton and receive credit toward their trade area requirements. Anybody have any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2337, amending city code, Chapter 5-203 Sub 5.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this, or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on portions of the north and south sides of 109th Avenue Northwest, east and west of Foley Boulevard. Mr. Hemmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. We're looking to introduce an ordinance, as you stated, restricting parking on either side of Foley Boulevard at 109th. It's one of a few full access intersections there. We got a trail on one side, sidewalk on the other. It's, it's not the narrowest, but it's also not our biggest street, and visibility is a concern there, particularly wintertime, snow plowing operations, emergency vehicles. So, this came in through the Traffic Review Committee. It was reviewed by staff. We're just looking to the 250 feet on either side, both the north and south sides of the road. We've had three responses from residents so far. One positive, two negative. It's, I get it. When you, when you try to reduce parking, it's tough. But trying to wedge them into an intersection like that is not a good or safe idea. So, we're recommending approval to introduce this ordinance.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hemmer on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Mayor, was this in response to any accidents or anything that had happened, or is this preventative?
Preventative, Councilmember Geisler.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Armstrong?
Have we had any similar requests or concerns about 113th? That's kind of the same situation there.
Yeah, Councilmember Armstrong, not that one in particular, but I think maybe just a month, month and a half ago, we did one, I think, further to the south on Foley. Forgive me. I'm, I'm not at 113th, no. But, but Foley, there has been one fairly recently. Oh, I'm sorry, that was East River Road about, about a month and a half ago. It's those, it's those county roads with the full access and trails and sidewalks adjacent to it. If, if you're asking for something, we could certainly go and review 113th as well.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just curious, because I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the people in that neighborhood as well. But I know there's a lot of questions and whatever else that I get about Foley Boulevard all, all the time, all the way from Northdale up to Yegrit. So, just curious.
We don't necessarily go out looking for them unless it's, you know, glaring for us. So, these come in from, from the public.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hemmer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I'm wondering, how did we come up with 250 feet back? Because you can only, you can't park so close to the intersection as it is. How did we get to 200?
How did we get to two-hundred-and-fifty feet? This is going to impact four or five houses on either side.
Yeah, Councilmember Guskoviac, it's about three houses in each side, so a total of three, six, nine, twelve properties close to that intersection. Once you start to, there's no magic number to, to how you get there, but if you say a hundred, then people start to cram closer to that intersection, and then you end up with the people that live in the homes, who wanted the parking to begin with, now can't even park in front of their own homes. So you're just trying to get it far enough away from those intersections to not compound the problem.
Any other questions of Mr. Himmer? If there are no further questions, we will consider an ordinance restricting parking on portions of the north and south sides of one hundred ninth Avenue Northwest, east and west of Foley Boulevard, introduced. Item twelve, and for those interested, it's our last item. But it might take us a little while. We're going to consider an introduction of ordinances amending city code chapters thirteen dash two hundred, thirteen dash three hundred, thirteen dash four hundred, thirteen dash five hundred, and thirteen dash six hundred. Mr. Himmer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council. You say it may take a little while, it's taken a couple of years just to get here. Couple of work sessions earlier this year, several emails, and it's been a long process. There's still more to go in chapter thirteen. This pretty much addresses everything in the water system, water connections, sanitary storm sewer. There's a few more to come for illicit discharge and others, but this has been a couple of years in the works with the building, staff, inspections, public works, the council, and the good conversations and discussions we've had. It's not an easy one to get through, that's for sure. There's a lot of technical items contained within. It's just how do we handle our utilities, and this hasn't been touched in decades. So there's certainly some things that have changed, and based upon your feedback, I think we've got something that's improved. Is it perfect? I don't know that any ordinance really ever is perfect, but I, I think there was a lot of time and energy and effort put into this, and I'm more than happy to bring this forward and make the introduction and recommend that we move this forward.
Okay. Mr. Himmer, you know, at, at the workshop, we discussed that surface water. You know, when you, when you're on page seven, I think it is, under thirteen, two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and wells and surface water really aren't the same thing. I mean, no matter what, how big of a drought we have, we're still, we're still, we still add water to the Mississippi when it comes through town. When we say that pumping from surface waters may be allowed, depending on the source time of year and other environmental factors, when there's a watering restriction, or even during the annual partial ban, when we do the odd and even-numbered addresses only, the use of private wells and pumping from surface water sources may be allowed, the entire, the entire riverfront from Anoka to Fridley is even-numbered, even-numbered addresses. So even if we were going to do something, that part of our, our ban doesn't make any sense. Councilmember Geisler, and I don't, I hope you don't mind, we were talking about this, and it seemed like it made sense to have a separation between surface water and wells, because wells are really drawn from a lot of the same aquifers that we're drawing from, but surface water is, it's a whole different game. And it just seems like it would be nice if we had a separation there. You know, I don't know, maybe allowed just troubles me.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll, I may disagree with you as it comes to, no matter if we're in a drought, we end up sending more water to the Mississippi. And surface waters is more than just the Mississippi. We're talking about Crooked Lake, we're talking about creeks in some conditions for people, so sometimes the conditions might, yes, our municipal wells are very deep, and that's coming from a different aquifer, but the wells we're talking about here, for some people, are either sandpoint wells or something that's a lot more shallow, that does have influence on those surface waters. So in, in some conditions, there, there may be necessity to do that. I mean, we've had the water down in, in certain elevations in, in some of our surface waters before, that if we just allowed it all the time, and people said, well, I'm just going to keep doing it, I would have concern for drying out wetlands, adjacent floodplains, things of that nature. So I didn't want to remove it altogether, that's why I highlighted it for you all to really look at and think about, because surface water and wells are interconnected in some way. And I, I heard what you said, but I still want to think about the environment and just put some sort of reasonableness on it, and, and it's not just carte blanche, okay, fine, I'm just going to throw a hose down in the river, into the neighboring creek and call it good. I think if everyone went that route, then we'd probably have different issues. So I'd rather have some bumpers on it, if you want to put it that way, to allow it under certain criteria. And you'll probably ask me, what are those criteria?
No, no, I'm not going to. I'm going to say I'm still just, just going to disagree with that language, but, okay. And I, and I apologize, you did send this out a while back, and I had thought at the workshop that we had already kind of worked through this, so I didn't look back really closely until today to see that we apparently didn't get it resolved at the workshop.
I'll, I'll also note it's contained in section thirteen two oh three under private wells. The use of pumps from surface may be allowed depending on the source time of year and other environmental.
I highlighted that one too, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Himmer, so in, in the sense that may be allowed implies that it's not allowed, unless we say it is. So is public works staff going to continually say whether it is allowed or not in specific water sources, like Mississippi may be fine, but Crooked Lake may be low? Or should we have specific language around irrigation ditches that are very different than the Mississippi River? I mean, I, I hear you on, on the wetlands, I hear you on that stuff. I do think, though, that, that, I mean, the, the dam being lowered has way more impact on the water level when they're doing repairs on it than anything that we're pumping out for irrigation. Like, it, you don't even notice. So I, I hear you on Crooked Lake, we've seen that, we see that elsewhere around Minnesota, we hear that, we see that in smaller water sources, but I struggle to see it on the river. And if we want to create a separate section for that, that's fine, but also it's, you know, it's gray water, it's on, it's on, it's not processed water, that's a big part of it too. So I do agree with the mayor on this one. I think a little better separation or clarity, or we're going to need to be specifically saying, yes, you can, no, you can't, yes, you can, no, you can't, even when we do the end, the partial bans and things like that. So I, I do think we could do better there.
Does anybody else have any questions on this, or comments, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong?
One way, 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 way down the list, Mr. Himmer, section, section, shoot.
Thirteen.
Thirteen dash two oh two.
Two oh two.
Yep.
That's second sentence, it says, public water system I comply. I think that's supposed to be in compliance, is that correct? Is that just a typo?
What's section thirteen two oh two?
Section, yeah, thirteen two zero two, the second sentence says, direct connection shall be made to the public water system I compliance with the chapter, should it be in compliance?
I would say, yeah, because I'm looking at what I sent to you, and it does say in compliance. So it must have just.
Really?
It's not attached to your, your memo that came off the legal side. I gave you the, the, so, yes, we will correct that, it should say in.
Are you throwing, are you throwing Mr. Brody under the bus?
No, no, no. Because I'm, I'm reading along, like, it does say in compliance, but I'm not on the memo.
It does not.
Okay.
Yes, there appears to be a typo, and we will fix that. You don't know how many people have read this either, so it's amazing, but it lasts that long. So thank you for pointing that out.
All right. So should we introduce this and consider, because we're not, we're not really, do we have time to workshop this again? I mean, nothing's, nothing's on fire here.
Right. Mayor, Council, I think you could introduce it, you know, we would, we would have an opportunity at Monday work session to talk about this. And, you know, if there's something that is more administrative that changes and still falls within what you could approve in two weeks, then so be it, we, we bring it forward then. If it's a substantive change that we have to reintroduce it in two weeks rather than just can continue on from the current introduction, that's fine too. As you mentioned, there's nothing on fire. So I, I guess I would recommend introducing it tonight, we can have the conversation on Monday. If it's something more significant, we'll come back, reintroduce it, and go on from there. Mr. Mayor, I guess I.
Mr. Himmer?
I'm just looking for some clarification. Is this separating the river specifically from other surface waters, or keeping it? Because I would say, what if we just said, the use of surface waters is allowed, as opposed to may be allowed? It's is allowed depending on those things. Is that enough of a qualifier, or do you still think rivers should be separate, or you just think it shouldn't be in here at all?
I don't, I, I, I'm, I don't know, I'm conflicted, because the language shall be allowed, I think, would, would be better, but, but there, because there is a difference between the private wells and, and the river is just kind of its own entity. I guess I wasn't terribly worried about Crooked Lake either, because the peer pressure of those lake owners would keep anybody from watering if the, that water level started to drop, but I, I guess I would like to see it separate, because I think they're two separate things.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskoviac?
Then would we separate all surface water, or just carve out some surface water? Because we do have other surface water in Coon Rapids, you know, Sand Creek, for example, is a big one, and a lot of houses back up to that one. This year, it's going great, but there are years that it gets dry, we've seen that. So how would we?
I don't know if anybody, does anybody even pump out of Sand Creek?
I'm not familiar, but.
I've never, I've never seen a pump in that, but I don't even know if they're allowed to. I don't know.
Because I know the DNR allows the river.
Yeah.
I, maybe there's some opportunity in state law that we could crib off of once allowed and not to.
Yeah. Why don't, why don't we just kind of, let's, let's workshop that, let's break down what those, what those surface waters are.
Okay.
And what actually is a thing? Because I don't, I've never seen anybody pump out of Coon Creek. I didn't, you know, most of the time, I didn't, I don't think you can, there's, although we've opened it up now.
Uh-oh.
No, I mean, the watershed has cleaned it all up, and, yeah, there's.
It's right down there. Okay.
All right. Yeah, I don't know that we're going to have much more clarification for you before the workshop, but if there's no further questions, we'll consider an ordinance amending city code chapters thirteen dash two hundred, thirteen dash three hundred, thirteen dash four hundred, thirteen dash five hundred, and thirteen dash six hundred, introduced. Yeah, because we've also got great big ponding areas too, I don't know, I'm not sure how that works. Okay, we are up to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? All right, seeing none, I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. What do we got for other business? I think we're. Mr. Stammel?
Mayor, Council, I just want to take a minute to recognize an employee at CTN who's made these meetings often run very smoothly for many years, but you would probably better recognize him through the various storytelling and on-air aspects that he's done at CTN, but our very own Steve Antis has announced his retirement, actually, it'll be later this week.
Really?
And so Steve is here tonight in the back room, and just wanted to say thank you, Steve, for all your years of service to CTN and to Coon Rapids, and for all the wonderful stories that he's put together over the years. It's, it's been a tremendous asset to CTN, and we're sorry to see him go, but we understand why. He's moving on to retirement, and hopefully bigger and brighter things, so.
Wow. That's, that really is a, that's one of those pivotal changes, you know? You're just used to seeing Steve in all, everything. Huh. Well, Mr. Antis, all the best to you, sir. All right. Do you have any, any, any news that'll redeem yourself now? Any good news?
Oh, well.
I mean, that's good for Steve. I thought that was happy for him, but.
Not off the top of my mind, no.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I am, I am perusing the city calendar, so I, you know, it's online, if folks want to go out there, that's a great spot to look. But it looks like before our next meeting, we'll have a senior bazaar Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, nine AM to three PM. Hey, look at that. Thank you, Steve. The, they are accepting donations from this Monday to Monday, November tenth, excluding the weekends from ten to noon, if you want to donate to that event. And then the other item that I see on the calendar is Saturday, November fifteenth, is the Fire Ball Gala. It's not sponsored by the city, but it is, the Coon Rapids Fire Department Community Fund is putting that on as well.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Any other business to have before, Council?
Most to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Butler to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.